All right. We will call the regular city council meeting to order. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Improvement to regular city council committee of the whole and special city council meetings of July 22, 2025, and they be approved and published on July 31, 2025. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
All right, moving to public hearings. We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of electric line easements to Interstate Power and Light Company at parcel 82-0644-0002. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address the public hearing? All right, any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like to know what this is entails.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to know what this entails. Is this for just digging a hole and running line, power lines, or?
So, this is, you know where we're located right now in Liberty Square?
Yeah.
No, this is the Liberty Square area, and this is where they need to be able to have easements when they have their poles, or they're running a power line. So, they have to have those easements. There's three of them, in this case, for a line.
They're gonna run underground power lines?
No, no. This is, I'm not sure on this, but I think these are all above. Have you seen when you drive by Old Town, there's like, a little, there's some stuff that's sitting in the middle of Liberty Square, you know, amongst the ground.
Like a little box, or?
That's the power box stuff that's separate of the substation there.
And that's what they're gonna be putting in, in all these easements?
I don't know about putting stuff in, is, sometimes they just need the easement to be able to work in there, not necessarily gonna be installing things.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, anything else for the public hearing? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing underground electric easement agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company for improvements on city parcel at parcel 82-0644-002, easement number 007. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing underground electric easement agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company for improvements on city parcel at parcel 82-644-0002, easement number 90. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of an electric line easement to Interstate Power and Light Company at 750 10th Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address the public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Shemmers.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing underground electric easement agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company for improvements on city parcel at 750 10th Avenue South. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of an electric line easement to Interstate Power and Light Company at 635 9th Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing done, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing underground electrical easement agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company for improvements on city parcel at 635 9th Avenue South. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving to the audience comment section. We do have one yellow card here. Tom Roman, Judy Callahan? So, because this item is not on the agenda, you have three minutes, and there can't be a conversation in between council, okay?
Okay.
Go right ahead.
I'm here, my name is Tom Roman. Judy and I live on 1300 Ridgecrest Drive, 13th, Texas, North 13th Street. And so, the issue that we have, and many people are here because of the same reason. We have an individual that parks a 36-foot motorhome on the street, and behind that motorhome is another 40-foot, a closed trailer behind that, and he puts his tractor in there. And so, for the last three years, we've been battling this because on Ridgecrest Drive, you cannot turn out a Ridgecrest Drive without looking into his, into this motorhome. You can't see. And three years ago, I pulled out of there, and I thought hit a car coming out. I called the police on the thing, three years ago. Somebody came up, gave him a ticket, I don't know, I think he plays a game, and he loses his vehicle 10 or 20 feet or whatever. So, three weeks ago, I pulled up there, and he was up to 10 feet from Ridgecrest Drive. Pulled out, and a contractor came up there and slammed on the brakes, about hit me again. I called the police again, and the police came up, and you can check the records. They came up, basically haven't done anything. We have a lot of children out there because from only three weeks, or three, two or three blocks from Whittaker School. A lot of kids riding their bikes, everything up there. It's a very dangerous situation, and, I mean, it's been going on for three months. It'd be like if I wanted to pull my semi-trailer and park that in front of that, on that street area, and, you know, something needs to be done in there, so.
I've talked to Mr. Musman on the phone, and, oh, let's see, last year, we had an incident where three boys were on a bicycle, and a truck, he was a contractor, came, did some work up there or something, and I did not see it, but I heard it, the squealing of the brakes, and the guy come beating on my door and wanted to know if it belonged to me. I said, "No, sir, it does not, but I can show you who it belongs to." So, he went over there, and he come back to my house, and he said, "There's nobody answering the door," but he has cameras all over his house and all over this motorhome, or whatever that thing is called, a monstrosity as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, so I went over and talked to him, we've tried to talk to him, and he just says, "It's my right." Well, I pay taxes on that side of the street because I am on Ridgecrest Drive.
We've got 10 seconds left, sorry.
Thank you. And I can't, yesterday, I went to mow my grass, I can't even mow my grass because that thing is in the way. So, I think a yield sign, a stop sign, won't do us any good because you have to go.
Okay, that's, that's the three minutes. Do we?
All right, well, thanks for listening to us.
Do we have, do we have contact information that we can get?
Mr. Mus, I gave it to him.
Mr. Mus, you have that?
You have my phone number.
Okay.
I'll need to get it from you again, I gave it to the city engineer.
Can you, can you have them put that on the, on the card there, and then we can have the appropriate department get ahold of them? Will that work? Thank you very much. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? All right. Moving on to consent agenda, councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
6P Paul.
6P?
Paul. 6 Paul.
Anything else from the consent agenda from council? All right, hearing done, can we have a roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Councilmember Seeley.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion. We receive a proven place on file, claims listings 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the claims listings? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation to boards and commissions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you read those for me, please?
I would love to. The ADA Advisory Commission, we have one reappointment of Tammy Levens for a two-year term. The Housing Authority, we have one reappointment of Kayla Kane for a two-year term. Housing appointment, we also have an appointment of Patrick Cullen for a two-year term. And then, for the Neighborhood Improvement, we have Marcia Thrall and Diane Moots are both filling an unexpired term. And we still have one position for the Vehicle For Hire Board.
Cool.
All right, any other discussion on this? I will say that we started using the new application for the appointments, and it, so far, it's doing exactly what we were hoping it would. We're getting a lot more information input in the boxes as far as qualifications and reasons for, for being on the board. So, so far, so good. Would you, would you agree, Councilmember Kearns?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Your Honor, I have a resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for issuance of $10,215,000 general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025B, and levying a tax to pay said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate, and continuing disclosure certificate. I move it be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution authorizing execution of a transit joint transportation agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. A temporary shuttle service between Clinton, Iowa and Fulton, Illinois. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Everybody's aware what this is, right? Yep. Due to the bridge being closed on the north end, we had some folks that were walking and biking across the south bridge, so this is a joint safety deal with the state in order to have that transit going across there.
Paid for by the DOT.
Paid for by the DOT, yep. Which makes sense, since there's no walking path across that one, so. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution selecting Burlington Junction Railway for third-party switching and railroad operator services at the Lincolnway Industrial Rail Park. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this? So, I had a question on this one. Is this just selecting them, and then we have to work the contract with them?
Yeah.
Okay, so that hasn't been finalized yet or anything?
So, you have to get your, it's gonna be arm wrestling, so you gotta get ready. So, and they're actually here tonight, I would love to embarrass them a little bit. If you're from Burlington, could you stand up real quick? Burlington Junction? And so, I wanna just do a shout-out to these two individuals, but also Jason Craft, if he could stand up real quick. Jason put together a group with Andy from Girl Clinton, along with Atlas Roofing, along with Super Eight Logistics. The team worked together, there was nine total applicants that put in for this, and what this is, is moving rail cars at the rail park. Either a short line or a third-party switcher, in the terminology that we use. And so, very competitive, and this was chosen, I think it'll be a great relationship, and we're gonna now roll up our sleeves, work on a contract, because they will be maintaining all the public rail track at the rail park, as well as being the movers and the shakers, if you will, in what terminology we use as drop, push, pole. So, Union Pacific will bring the cars in, they'll drop them off, Burlington Junction will basically then take them where they need to go, and then bring them back, get them back onto the main line, and get them throughout the country. So, we're very happy to have you guys join us and come up from Burlington today, and looking forward to a good and long enduring partnership.
Yeah. No, this is pretty exciting, because this is, obviously, you have Atlas going out there, but actually having the rail cars start to move and all that stuff, this is, it's a big deal, so. All right, any other discussion? Did you guys wanna make any comments, or? You don't have to, I don't wanna put you on the spot. All right, come on up.
He drove two hours.
Yeah, I had given you about.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, around three minutes. Well, it's about two hours, bro. I'm based in Iowa City. Good evening. I'm Peter Hoth, one of the family owners of the Burlington Junction Railway. My technical title is Corporate Development, but BJR IO is founded by my father, Stephen Hoth, back about 40 years ago. An attorney, who started operations down in Burlington, Iowa, in 1985. And the railroad continues to be owned by me and my brother and my mom, and we just celebrated our 40th anniversary. And having grown from the one location, we're now at 16 locations in the upper Midwest, a variety of different capacities, including operating over track where we own it as a short line, operating over leased track from Class 1 railroads such as Burlington Northern Santa Fe, Union Pacific, or we have a couple of locations where we actually operate city-owned track in Rochelle, Illinois, as well as Lamar's, Iowa. So, we're familiar with this type of relationship and looking forward to, to growing this opportunity. And we're excited to work with the city of Clinton to grow and operate the Lincolnway Industrial Rail Park. And I'm proud to have a company meet tonight, Eric Pitcher, who stood up there as well. He has been with us for about a year and a half, so he's one of our newest employees, but prior to that, he served as Director of Economic Development for the Burlington Northern Santa Fe and the Chicago region for about 20 years. And previous to that, worked with utility companies and municipalities, all in an economic leadership role. So, we're excited to use our economic development staff to help grow this park to benefit us, because we like to switch railcars. But we like to see the folks that we like work for and switch for as a community. And our goal is to commit to operating the park in a safe manner, because safety is our first priority, and extend our customer service, which is let us grow from that one location, Burlington, to those multiple locations up in the upper Midwest. And as part of this goal, whenever we begin operations in a new location, we like to recruit local individuals to be our people on the ground, our engineers, our conductors, and then they go through our training process, then operate the rail. So, we're hoping to add at least three full-time jobs, kind of operating this rail park. I'm excited to get to know each of you as we build this relationship over time. I think this is a very relational business, and looking forward to a prosperous relationship on both ends. So, thank you for the opportunity and look forward to our upcoming discussions.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. All right. Any other discussion from council? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving official endorsement of funding application to Iowa Department of Transportation for the 2027 Traffic Safety Improvement Program for the 16th Street Northwest and Mill Creek Parkway Roundabout Project. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
What's the, what's the city's match?
It's $900,000, and Jason and I worked on the CIP, we split it out. We did, excuse me, $400,000 for 2028 and $500,000 for 2029, fit it into this current CIP plan, the 10-year plan.
Sorry, you said 10-year plan?
Yeah, 10-year plan, yeah. So, because this is gonna be 2029, and we can split it over those two years, and we just rearranged other things that we're looking at doing, and made this a higher priority for safety.
Do you remember what you had to boot down?
Probably some payment, probably some payment management stuff.
Okay. All right. So, this is just applying for the grant?
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is the same program we did for 19th, that intersection, right?
Yes.
Maybe?
Yes, no, same thing.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the official endorsement of the RPA 8 Transportation Alternative Program Grant Application for the South 14th Street Recreational Trail Bluff to Lincolnway. I move that to be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. She's eager about the trail program. Is there any discussion on this?
Where's the money coming from?
What did you do there?
We used it all up on the last one, I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
Did you do anything?
No, we, we really don't have, it's a great project, but we really don't have those dollars that we can take from something else, from this.
So, what are we gonna do if we get it?
Well, I think that would be at that point in time, if you, if you want to accept it, we'd have to look at.
So, speaking of that, hold on. I had the timeline. I do have that. Yeah, you guys asked me what the timeline would be on this grant.
For the dollars, yeah. 2028?
So, the Iowa DOT allows the RPA for TAP funding to borrow upfront, so a project, this project could be ready next year, but it would have to be 26 to 29 is when it would have to be completed, or at least started. I don't know if it's, Jason, do they just have to be started by that? For the, the tip over those three years?
Jason Craft, city engineer, yeah, the timeline's pretty relaxed. It's gonna take a couple of years to program or design a project, acquire any necessary easements, so it's gonna be a few years. It would be known sooner, I think, than fiscal year 27, but more likely something like 27 to 28 for construction and when we would need the, the matching funds. So, just, the original estimate was 350, I figured, you know, with inflation and with some possible easements and other construction costs, the local match was $400,000. I mean, it's, it's really up to the, the council to prioritize these things or not, and this is definitely a good program. It's $500,000, you get like a little more than half-price recreational trail. Certainly up to you all if you wanna prioritize the money or not for the match.
And I think the discussion really comes back to, you know, we have $200,000 for sidewalk program this upcoming year. If we continue to do that, or do we hold off on two years of that to do this trail that would connect altogether, but that would be something you guys could decide at that point in time.
Councilman Obrin.
program this upcoming year. If we continue to do that, or do we hold off on two years of that to do this trail that would connect altogether? But that would be something you guys could decide at that point in time.
Councilmember Obrin?
That was exactly my thought, Matt, when we first started talking about this, how many years ago, Jason? Probably five now. And we're talking about trails that it's also sideways. It's sidewalk, it's trails, it's both, depending on what side of the street you're on, really. So when we, when this came up, that was, you know, I went right to, hey, that sidewalks. I mean, that's what it is. It's a sidewalk.
You mean the trail.
The trail.
It's a sidewalk trail.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sealy.
Yeah, I want to do it, but we, we just had a conversation about spending money that we haven't planned for, and we're, we're doing it continually. So I, I do agree with Matt. We could definitely take that money for the sidewalks, but then we're deferring a problem that we know we need to take care of. So.
I just watched a postal worker trip today.
It worries me that we, you know, we want new, we want new, but then we fail to maintain our existing. And we, we do do that quite a bit, so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, Jason's right, though, you know. It's hard to turn away half a million dollars when you can get half of it paid for, but it's also hard to turn your head to the sidewalks that have two-inch dips and bumps and cracks and, so, yeah.
Well, the only neat part is when you start, when you come off of South 14th and you go into Fairway, and then you drive, and then you come around by Jurgensen, and you drop down, there are sidewalks.
Yep.
That could be replaced with the trail and that aren't super.
That's true.
They may not be on a top.
No, I think it'll be nice, especially with bluff being redone and you tie it all together. I know, not arguing.
It's just a hard one.
Every part of me wants, wants to go forward. The other part of me says, hey, you've got other obligations.
Yep.
So this could be awarded as soon as this year.
Yeah, so.
And we have to kind of know where our match is coming from within four to five years.
It, it could be, yeah. I mean, they, they can borrow upfront in the, in the Transportation Alternative Program, is what he's saying. So it, it could be available next year, but it doesn't have to be.
We would likely have a grant agreement coming forward to council next, I would say, February to April.
Yeah.
If we're, we're foreselected.
And these, the funds are 26 through 29, so the project would have to be started or completed by 29. Do you know that?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty, like I said, the way it reads, it has to be completed by 29.
Okay.
But it could be extended. I think it would be done by 29.
Right.
I'm sure it's not that hard.
What's the probability of getting this?
Very strong. We got, it's the same funding source we use for 13th Avenue. That's gonna be constructed next year, finally. Took a while. So I don't know how competitive these are, because it's a regional thing. We're, we're going against like local communities, Boca, Comanche, DeWitt, communities like that. So I think it's a good project. If it's a good project, I think that the board will, I think it'll score highly.
This, this is a program through the RPA that is not heavily used, I would say. There's not a lot of application for this stuff. And they had, is it 1.5 million that they have there? And in our meetings, they basically said, hey, we have this money. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna open up a new round of applications, because they didn't get any.
It's easier for a city like Clinton to, to develop a project of this magnitude, rather than somebody else in communities in the region. So it's, I think it's fairly likely.
Yeah. Not why you went here, but.
What if we get it and then we can't fund it, and we have to say no down the road? Is that?
Just goes back into the pool.
Does it look bad for us, or is it like?
No, things happen. I mean.
I mean, we got this funding for 13th, and we're how many years into that? Just because it slowed down a little bit, so.
It's a federal grant, so it takes, I mean, I said it's a regional grant, but it's federal money that triples down, and it takes forever to construct these types of things. So it could easily be deferred three to four years, the local funding. So I think it could be, the problem could be solved if you think it's a viable project. I mean, it's like, like Councilman Sealy said, it's a good project. It connects a lot of recreational, it connects like bluff project, the school there, those other fields, the church and all that property, Jurgensen, and, and what's the, let's say, and then Agalick and Waze.
And it creates a functional loop.
Creates a good, a good bike loop hopefully people can use.
All right. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for the second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending City Code 31071 pertaining to acting city administrator appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? I do have one thing, and I gotta find it again. I'm sorry, everyone. I just had it, and then I lost it when I looked up that other one.
There's another paragraph before this that will be still there.
So there's, there's a, I think I just typed in that. There we go. So I sent it out to everybody via email. When I was, we were looking at this, and we were adjusting the language that was voted on last time. It kind of struck me, the title, the appointment and compensation. So I went back and looked at the code. And I just wanted to make sure that we were just replacing a couple sentences in there, because there are, and I talked to Matt about this, there's some sentences that are in the actual ordinance that need to remain in there. And so I don't know if you want to pull the code up. You can look at it there.
I don't want to get that bar up, I mean.
I don't think you typed it.
We're gonna go to Oregon.
Clinton, Oregon? You own a vacation home there?
Well, this is Crystal Lake.
Oops. See, it did in the end.
See, how big this could be?
I don't know what this thing is on the top. I need that to move. There you go.
Well, either way, it just outlines.
There we go.
The.
Maybe not.
I don't know why it's being so difficult.
You can click that city administrator one.
Yep, there you go.
It should be there.
Yep, there you go. All right, so basically the first couple sentences there that say the council shall appoint the city administrator by majority vote, the qualifications, and then the sentence that the city administrator shall reside within the city limits.
Yep.
I think, we, I wanted to make sure that those sentences were not going away. I think they're important. And then after it says reside within the city, the language that we voted on last time, and then the last sentence of the paragraph, the administrator receives compensation as established by a resolution of the council. I just wanted to ensure that we were not removing those sentences, and we were just replacing basically the sentence that talked about the city attorney being the acting administrator within the language. Everybody got that email and saw that?
Mm-hmm.
Pat, are you following?
Yeah. I was just looking at the amendment language. City shall be updated as follows.
Our recommendation, Pat, was that we basically, for the third reading, we put the stuff back in there that it looks like.
So the full paragraph is in there?
So you see the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that the language we want to keep be added to the next draft for the next approval.
And show the whole thing, so everybody knows exactly what, how it reads. So this part can be back. So those first two sentences and the last one should be put in and kept in there.
So we, do we do the second reading, or do we postpone the second reading until the next meeting to, so that language?
Or we can, we can, someone can make an amendment, a motion to amend to include the language the mayor just discussed in the next draft and pass it, pass that amendment, and then, then do a vote on the section as amended, and then staff will get that language in there for the third reading, and so you won't have to do anything.
I'll make a motion to amend.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to make the amendment, or we're leaving those sentences in there. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, can we have a roll call on the amendment, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, now we have the motion second for the ordinance itself for the second reading as amended. Is there any discussion on that? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Schumers?
Your honor, I have an ordinance for a second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Clinton, Iowa by amending Sections 52.090 entitled Sewer Use Charge for the Purpose of Establishing a Generally Applicable Sanitary Sewer Rate or Charge for Certain Contract Users.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy, 6P?
6P.
Unfinished business.
Did we, did Pat work on this, or did you?
Yes, both of us.
Okay. Like, did we put an RFQ out, or what did we do?
You want, you want Pat to go into these? So this has been a long time coming.
Yep.
And so it was kind of strange how we got here, but we ended up getting to a place where now we have somebody that can actually do the appraisal.
Yep, for 20 grand.
This guy is an expert at this particular type of appraisal.
They've done this before.
Yes.
That's gonna be my next question.
They're linked into CBRE, CBRE.
Yep.
But they've had other samples, whether it be wells, like oil wells, other wells. They, they can do this versus just a piece of ground.
Okay.
And he was referred by another person I trust, and Matt and I have worked with several times, and he knew about this gentleman and said, this is the guy you need. And we interviewed him, and he was very astute and understood what he was trying to do, understands the assignment. And you being an appraisal guy, you will, you would have appreciated him, I think, Cody.
Good.
We did thought it was high, too, but.